Mean order, uh, if we all please rise, say the pledge of allegiance, I appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice struggle.
Please be seated. Okay, first thing on the agenda will be the roll call. Alden Smith. Alden Quinn.
Here.
Alden Snyder.
Here.
Alden Saunders.
Here.
Alden Simpson. Alden Othlon. We have a quorum. Okay, first thing on the agenda will be to review the minutes, uh, from, and approve the minutes from the July twenty-four point twenty-five Board of Alden Reading, found under tab four.
Oh, I need to make those. Yes, sorry.
Can you approve updates or we have to do it again next week? Can? Entertaining motion to approve the minutes with updates or corrections. Have a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes for July twenty-four with the noted corrections. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor to the meeting minutes in July twenty-four point twenty-five with the noted corrections. All in favor, please say aye and hold your hand up.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed say nay. Alright. Uh, if you want to curious what that's all about, we've had, uh, at least one individual asked that because they watched the recordings, they can't hear who said what. So they'd like to have a visual representation of who voted aye or who voted nay. So I'm gonna try to do that. I can't promise I'll get it every time, but I'm gonna make an attempt. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the mayor's report. I will make an effort. Did I miss something? My mic. I'm not having them on, turning it on. Do I need to? Do I need to turn it on? Can y'all hear me fine? No? It says? You guys are awesome. Uh, not this meeting, but hopefully the next. Uh, gonna present the board with, uh, an opportunity to update the building permit and fee structures, uh, for those of you who are intimately familiar with this document. You'll note that on the gas department that it already states all commercial industrial metering is installed at cost. Uh, we didn't do anything on electric service. So what we've come up with is that for residential service over thirty-seven point five KVA will be at cost, uh, commercial and industrial meter installation will be at cost. Service upgrades to existing service, whether the residential, commercial, industrial, the customer will bear the cost of the upgrade. And for temporary service meters for public or private events, those will be provided at the board's discretion, which means they have to come up and have ask for your all permission to do that. And that is to make sure all the reduction rolls were even allowed that to happen, i.e. electric service. Um, that'll be something we'll talk about in the future. Um, next thing, I'm not sure how I'm gonna handle this one. I should've got it on the agenda, but it's kind of a late, kind of come up late. Uh, went back and talked to Mike Hall at, uh, at, uh, Black and Beach. Uh, they can, for all intents and purposes, completed, uh, their design work. What was not contained within that, uh, work specification was for them to prepare, uh, the, uh, formal bid documents. Um, there's a couple exceptions. It's, it's kind of complex. I don't know if I want to all of that. But, uh, long story short, uh, to have them prepare the front end of the bid documents, um, and get the project advertised, uh, there at Columbia through ADS, respond to bidders' questions, uh, blah, 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 goes on and on. Uh, attend and run a pre-construction conference with whoever we might have worked contracts to. Review bids metals, pay estimates, change orders, et cetera, et cetera. Um, do a, uh, substantial completion site visit, a punch list, uh, do a final inspection, and also they would, uh, do the issue of completion notice to, uh, Missouri Department of Revenue. And of course, we didn't catch what they weren't going to do in the first, uh, first go around, and this will be no thirty-five thousand dollars. So I'll be coming back to you guys very, very soon to have a, uh, formal discussion on, uh, going the next step on that project. And of course, I'll engage George from People Services to give me the necessary advice. And I believe that completes, uh, the mayor's report. The next thing on the agenda will be the city clerk's report.
I don't really have a lot either. Uh, I do have someone with me tonight, Lizzie. Uh, she has transferred from the license side over to the utility side. Uh, Rachel has gotten all of her training and she's able to work by herself. And of course, Lizzie's always there to back up. Um, I requested someone from the state to come in and do some other, just hands-on training with Rachel like, uh, Lizzie had, so, uh, I think we're being really shaped. We, uh, Chris, you started a couple of weeks ago too. That's working out as well, so. Um, about the only other thing I have on here is the property tax rate. I've noticed a significant difference in my valuations this year from Monroe County regarding the library. And I met with them, we learned yesterday on that, and I did get some feedback back from the state auditor's office, but I still need to compute the rate and I'm still just, I'm uncertain about it. So, uh, hopefully, we have to have that tax rate passed by September first, at least it is. So, I mean, I'll, I'll get everything answered and, uh, straightened out on that. Look at the tax rates. The economic development sales tax will take place October one, too. It will start in town.
That's when you start collecting?
Yes.
And so when we like receive it, I'm just curious, because I mean, like, where I pay is like a month?
Monthly, yeah. So they'll collect it all for October and I'll, I usually receive it second, second week of November, so.
Okay, so monthly, that's good.
Yeah.
I was getting ready to ask the same question. Alright, what else? Alright, next thing we have will be the city attorney's report, and he is not here this evening. He did not give anything to report instead, so we'll move right along. Uh, there are no authorized guest speakers. We'll be talking about that issue later, later, later tonight. Uh, also, so the next thing we have on the agenda will be, uh, under tab nine, new business starting out with, uh, cemetery stone repair bids. You have within your packet what appears to be a single bid. Is that correct?
That is the one bid we're seeing, yes.
Okay, um.
And that's within the budget, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a budget.
He has done the repairs on previous years for the city, as far as I know. Everyone's pleased with his work.
Nah, I would agree.
That's a pretty specialized thing, right?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve the bid from, uh, DJV Construction in an amount of three thousand five hundred dollars for the repairs to the stones or resetting the stones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a most second on the floor to approve the bid from DJV Construction for resetting the stones in the cemetery in an amount of three thousand five hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed say nay. Okay, so look at that. It'll be awarded DJV Construction. Okay, a resolution, uh, appointing a director and an alternate director to the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission. That's something you nearly, if I read it correctly.
Currently, we have Chris Beeler and Justin Price as the director and alternate director. So, uh, with the staff changes, we definitely need to update those.
Obviously, yes. Yes.
So Justin would be listed as the director and Adam would be listed as the alternate director.
That sounds like a good idea. So, we need to, uh, have a motion to appoint, uh, Justin Turner, uh, as the director and Adam Hunkel as the, uh, alternate.
I'll make that motion.
Wow. We, we have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Justin Turner as, oh boy, the, uh, director and Adam Hunkel as the alternate director to the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, representing the city of Monroe City. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The points are made. Thank you. Okay, as required annually, the next thing we have on our agenda under new business is bill number six, which is an ordinance regulating conflicts of interest in the city of Monroe City of Missouri. Uh, Dinette, would you mind expanding on that requirement?
Sure. Uh, so as you all know, as a local official, you all are required to sign, um, political, you, you have to do financial disclosure for states of that nature. Well, this is regarding conflict of interest, uh, and it's just stating that, uh, you know that your position is not for personal gain and, uh, that you're here to serve on behalf of the city government, basically. This ordinance is something that the city re-adopts every other year. And it's up in, uh, August twenty-fifth of this year, so we'll just re-adopt. And to be in compliance with the Missouri Ethics Commission.
Right.
Oh, I got it.
Could he just read it?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to, uh, approve the...
We just need to have the first reading.
Yeah, the first reading. Looking for, there it is. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of bill number six, an ordinance regulating interest in the city of Monroe City of Missouri. All in favor, please say aye and hold, hold up your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it. First reading passes. Take a motion for the second reading. And a motion on the floor for a second reading of bill number six, an ordinance regulating conflict of interest in the city of Monroe City of Missouri. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion second on the floor to approve the second reading of, uh, bill number six, an ordinance regulating conflict of interest in the city of Monroe City of Missouri. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay and raise a hand. Ayes have it.
Did roll call Alden Snyder?
Yes.
Alden Othlon?
Yes.
Alden Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, that completes, uh, the bill. The next thing will be, uh, the engineering services for emerging contaminants. Uh, each of the board members is provided with a packet for review and given a scoring sheet to conduct their review and score, uh, each of the, uh, potential, uh, engineering firms that we would engage to do the emerging contaminant study. Uh, I have in front of me, uh, Alden Quinn's, um, not sure who this one is, it's not signed. Robbins. This is Greg's. Page two is Greg's. We need to come back and, uh, we need to come back.
Do you have a better copy of it?
Here's my new copy of my rich model.
Yeah, yeah, mine's pretty faded too. Um, okay. So you say this second, can you, can you give me the score off Greg's original?
Sure. Miko eighty-seven.
First, first column's eighty-seven?
Klinger ninety-five.
Okay.
Allstate eighty-five.
Okay.
Black and Beach eighty-five.
Okay, so we got Robbins, we got Greg, we got Laurie's, um... That's mine. We got Laurie, Laurie's original.
Actually, it's still, we use those scores.
You have one?
This is, this is a name now. It was in the packet that I gave you.
Well, if there's a new scoring sheet that you sent out yesterday?
Yeah. Um...
Do you need a few copies of that scoring sheet?
I have several copies.
Okay.
You leave on?
I have to say, I wrote these when I was learning them.
Anyone else need one? Mike?
Nah, I just... You gave me everything, but I thought you told me you were not gonna be doing it this year.
Well, I tell you what happened. We were unable to, uh, get everybody to be here. Uh, Monday, we missed our deadline for getting posted. Uh, there were, uh, the Aldens were not available for Tuesday. Uh, Maria wants it now, okay, from the Missouri Department of Revenue. She didn't say that. She said she's, she would like to see it soon. So that's, that's me putting words in, uh, in place of what she might actually say. But, uh, there was a sense of urgency.
Can I put this in the back of the box?
Okay.
And we just go with...
You wanna, okay, so here's what we'll have to do. How will that work if we do it after this meeting?
Well, I hope there'll be a majority tonight.
There might be.
If there'll be a majority tonight, uh, we can go ahead and do forward, sir.
I have notes written on my, my pamphlets.
Mm-hmm. What do you think?
Because, because if there's a need, you know what?
If there's a consensus, yeah.
I mean, I'm just...
If a majority of... Well, there's, yeah, we have, we have this, uh, we have Greg's data, right?
Robbins.
We have Robbins. Uh, the first two, the one is the same and the second choice is... Well, if you wanted, if you wanted to do it that way, excluding, uh... Well, excluding, uh... Well, what we could do, we could quite simply just document the individual's scoring. And then we can also have it structured. I don't know if I've ever been to one of these before, uh, in this, in this particular form before. So, uh, I hope that doesn't create any difficulty for anybody. Uh, we, uh, sent, uh, email invitations to eleven firms. Uh, and many of those firms are firms which are, uh, recommended to us as potentials to, uh, attempt to engage in minority, uh, minority owned, women owned, veteran owned, uh, they have, they have acronyms they use that I don't have with me, uh, for, uh, those types of, uh, firms that they require you to at least consider. Uh, unfortunately, not a single one of them, uh, sent back the, uh, the information or submitted their, their request for qualifications, so it makes it difficult. Makes it difficult. Uh, we had a few firms send back, uh, letters indicating that they were, uh, very busy and would not be able to, uh, to physically do the work. Uh, Bart West was one of those firms that did that. Uh, I think Bart West was doing some work maybe in Palomar now, I'm not sure. Uh, but their name had came up. I think it was Canton that they were doing some work for. George Bart, I think that's what we can, yeah, we can. I think they're doing some big project over there. Um... What's your pleasure? How you wanna handle this? Wanna, wanna, uh, tally of the individual score sheets? Um, can you see where that takes us? Okay.
Sure.
That's what we'll do, that's what we'll do. Uh, okay.
I mean, now we've got five, right?
You're all able to do your own if you'd like to double check this, uh, scoring. So, um... Let me who log off here. I forgot Laurie. And I'll put a name over here. And we got, uh, eighty-five on Miko. Eighty-nine on Klinger. Seventy-nine on Allstate. Eighty-two on Black and Beach. Alden Smith. We had eighty-seven on Miko. Twenty-five on Klinger. Eighty-five on Allstate. Eighty-five on Black and Beach. Uh, Alden Simpson. We had eighty-six. Miko ninety, Klinger. Seventy-eight on Allstate. And eighty-two on Black and Beach. That's the three that I have there. It will be Mr. George. Eighty on Miko. Ninety-two on Klinger. Ninety-two on Allstate and ninety-two on Black and Beach. We have Mary. Seventy-six, Miko. Ninety-three on Klinger. Fifty-five on Allstate, due not on watch dot com. Ninety-three on Black and Beach. So what we have left, we have, uh, Mike? What do you have on Miko?
I didn't score it.
Didn't score them at all?
Mm-mm.
So you have zero? Okay, what about Klinger?
I didn't do any of them.
Oh, you didn't score them?
I didn't score any of them, so then just, yeah.
So you're a, uh, you abstain?
Sure, yeah.
Alright, what about you?
I just got it.
Okay, so you want... I thought we were giving it about plenty of time to address this, but...
Scott just, just...
I really like that. Well, I sent it out two days ago on email.
I'll check.
Well, what do y'all want to do? Want a special meeting to do this?
It's gonna be like we're outnumbered anyway.
How's that?
Cause your majority, everybody's got Klinger as the top one.
You can go back to work. I mean, according to the three that have missed pass, it's Klinger.
Klinger's seven.
But that doesn't...
Well, I mean, there's a hundred possible points in each category, there's, uh... Mike, did, Mike, did you, did you just need more time, Mike, to do this?
Pretty much.
Okay, so let's table, we'll have another meeting.
I don't know. Let me ask you this. If we submitted our tallies, can the majority just go? Can we approve the majority to be awarded? Is that possible?
I mean, yeah, let's say, like tomorrow, they look at it and they send you like these parts.
We send you these and we don't have to, and not have to re-meet?
Okay, upon completion of the discussion, telling of evacuation sheet, a motion was made by somebody, a second by somebody, to enter to an agreement with somebody. Motion passes unanimously, or however, this is just a, uh, I don't know.
That can only be...
It's representative of how you would do it. Um...
Is that acceptable? For this particular service, I honestly don't know. Would you go to that department or resources?
If we had, uh, if we had another meeting and we had quorum and we had all the, all the votes, uh, excuse me, all the, all the score completed, in that meeting, a decision could be made by those board members based upon, uh, the, uh, total tally of all board members. You could, of course, keep in mind, uh, you could also vote not to use the firm that had the most, if you'd have to justify, if you'd have to qualify that decision in a response to, uh, DNR resulting to the grant application. So I would entertain a motion to table this, uh, until the next, next scheduled meeting, which most likely will be a special meeting.
Just from a points perspective, if you add them all up, Klinger is in the lead by forty-five points of the five that we have.
I get it, I get it.
Um, do we wanna go to the scheduled meeting?
Well, he, he, the highest individual is what, ninety? Say forty-five?
Klinger is ahead overall by forty-five when you add them all up. Of the five that we have.
No.
I would be curious if we could just, I mean, if we're gonna go off these score sheets, then can we just submit them? I'm afraid to just go with the consensus of the highest score, or is that not acceptable?
So my thought is, it looks unanimous if there is not going to be any more discussion.
Maybe tally...
Are, are you proposing, are you proposing to make a motion to accept one of these?
I'm proposing them. Yes. yes.
So you need to make a motion to accept one of these four firms?
I make a motion to accept the that's on the
Request for qualifications from?
Klinger and Associates.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor based on the current tally results to accept the request for qualifications from Klinger and Associates as the engineering firm to award the contract to for the emerging containment study. Contested upon receipt of a grant from the Missouri Department of Revenue for said study. We have a second? We have a motion, a second on the floor to accept Klinger and Associates as the engineering firm to perform the emerging containment study. And that would allow us to enter into a contract with them for engineering services for the emerging containment study. Contested upon receiving the grant from the Missouri Department of Revenue, which currently is an amount of up to sixty-five thousand dollars. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We will then proceed with the appropriate documentation to allow the mayor to enter into a contract for Klinger and Associates to be there in further discussion.
I do think in full transparency for those of us that haven't submitted our actual scores, you go ahead and submit one.
Please do. Please do. Knowing baseball on the map, it wouldn't change the outcome. But we have to have those and you need to you need to, do they have to be signed or initialled or anything special? On these, just turn them in like
I have seen what you've seen.
She said, she said just submit the scoring sheet. So how about this? George, would you please initial yours? Did you, is that a signature?
That's a signature, but I will.
Oh, okay, that's fine. I got your signature. That's fine.
That's for us.
Would you mind initial yours?
Lori.
I'll remind everyone.
Excellent. So here's an original, here's an original. Here's an original. Are you gonna go ahead and put one? I don't know how they respond to it. I don't know how they respond. Greg's not here. I guess I'll leave Greg's signature. Alright. Greg, Lori. You need to see the rest of these.
You have that thing that I gave you?
Yeah, you're gonna have to redo this.
Oh, okay.
Or something, maybe. I'll let you get a judge. Anything else? Any further discussion on that? Not moving by long. Alright, next thing on the agenda will be committee reports, planning zoning. I see no one. Parks and Recreation. I see no one. On Parks and Recreation, remind me, what is the dollar value amount that has to be approved by the board before it can be expended on a purchase? Is it one thousand?
Well, per our ordinance, it's set at five hundred.
Set at five hundred? So if what Rodney's looking for comes in over five, I'm gonna have to come back before the board to get that approved? Okay. Economic Development Tax Board. I think we're having more planning, some sort of strategy, the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Administration Committee. Operations Committee. Alright, we're gonna move right along into department reports with the first report being the Police Department.
I see the report, sir.
Kim, did you give him that message that?
I did.
Here, I'll give this to you because she said
Oh, a concerned citizen report.
Yeah, Frank did clean it up, but then gone. Yeah, he got teared and dropped. Well, he's so trying to get it, I said I said, I don't think I seen.
No, I'm pretty sure he just
that's all. He went shopping when he put their trash out. That's what she said.
Any else for the police department?
Well, no, that's all I got.
So will they just get another citation, I guess?
Yeah, I was trying to go over it yesterday, but he was unavailable. I would give it to Frank.
Since this issue was brought up and this is your, is your report. The city attorney had previously provided information relative to public health being a significant issue in making a determination in those cases where a domicile is not does not have hot and cold, running water, sewer, electric or heat. And that that can be used to further move that ball down the road a little bit. I'm not sure what we need to do with that. He said it was already in existing ordinances under health and safety, but I'm certainly not capable of quoting it to you off the top of my head, although I did read it. And it sounds like a method where short of condemning the property.
I've been trying to get you with that building inspector. Schedules have to line up to meet up.
No.
I've talked to him several times in regards to that residence. But we were gonna meet up. Mr. Lucas was unavailable to at the residence. He was MIA for
Yeah, it's, you know, and I think that there may be one or more instances where this has come up, not only currently, but in the past where we ran into certain difficulties. I think what I will do is get in touch with our city attorney and see if he can give us more information that might be helpful to us.
Absolutely, it's more help than merit.
Is this person listed at the top, the land owner, the property owner?
No. I said it personally.
And this is the same person who lives on North Main?
Yes.
If he owns it and rents, or you said this person is the second person of squad?
Well, I believe she's renting their family. I think he's letting them stay there for quite a while. I don't know their pay grade yet, but it, as far as trying to get Mr. Lucas John out, they'd have to go through courts for property eviction.
So let me ask this, who do the citations go to?
The citations go to the individual residing.
They don't go to the property owner?
As far as this one, it was going towards John. Because he was the one residing there. It would ultimately could fall back on Frank, yes, but we cited John.
Thoughts?
I mean, it's not inhabitable without water.
I'm sorry, what?
It's not inhabitable, like you said, without water.
Well, I, you know, I, there has to be, that determination has to be made by someone with the appropriate qualifications under our existing ordinances, and that's not me. That would be the building inspector and or I'm not sure who the other one might be. I should stop right there. I need to get this information from John into the police department's hands and also Bob, our building inspector's hands.
Do you think there was out power or utilities for quite a while?
That's my understanding.
That's what I thought.
That's my understanding. Yeah.
I mean, he does have a small generator that he does use from time to time. However, we've had him turn it off because it was creating these disturbance to neighbors. I mean, it wasn't like scorching hot or extremely cold when he did this, but he applied. Like during the day, he would run it, which is sensible to neighbors who are at work.
Okay.
On the water, he gets it from elsewhere to drink and assorted other things. Nobody, as far as I know, has been inside that residence in a law enforcement capacity because they never let us inside, sure.
Does anybody know if there, this renter has put trash out and it's getting picked up?
That was stopped as well.
Okay.
I believe that was
He is paying for it.
So Danes is not even, won't pick it up for him?
Correct.
Okay.
They're not paying utility.
He's not paying utility, so.
You don't get to get your
Yeah, that got corrected because from what I gathered, Danes was picking trash up and then they realized, as the city realized that he wasn't paying and that's part of utilities, so they contacted Danes and they expected.
Well, I think we'll move along from this. I don't think we'll get much accomplished.
As also, you know, I have two patrol cars at Poe Chevrolet right now.
Two?
Yes.
Guess that explains why I wondered where the two were at. Wow, same issue?
Well, one hundred. Possible transmission issue. I took it to Tri County thinking they ran a code, a reader on it, I believe yesterday or the day before. And they thought it was a fuel pump, so they cleared all the codes. It was running okay and it started acting up last night. I drove it over there today and it stopped moving.
Sure sounds like a transmission problem as long as the motor was still running. And it was in gear.
Yeah, well, we were driving down the road and it was peeking out at thirty-five hundred RPMs at thirty miles an hour. And then alternations, so, and it wasn't jerking at all, so it was very odd. And the other patrol car had to wait for a certified GM mechanic to come in to hook. Is what they told me.
Somehow I feel if I was to use the word limit, I'd get sued, so. Three of them.
Yeah, but knock on wood, one oh three hasn't been shot in quite a while.
Better knock on wood, really hard. Thank you.
Which one, the second one, which one was that?
One hundred is now in at Poe, one oh two has been at Poe. Yeah.
What's going on with one oh two? Is it transmission again?
That one was a multitude of issues. Well, goes down, we run the other one twenty-four hours a day, full shifts.
Are you gonna eliminate stain out in front of the police department to make up for all of this?
A what?
Eliminate stain.
I was saying more of this, I think more of the speed. I mean, starting, starting right about in front of Sees, dropping speed up to five.
I'm sorry, guys.
I'll stay with the four way with the best on.
Are there grants out there for police vehicles?
Gosh, I honestly don't know. I wish.
Oh, there are?
There is today.
Cool, we need to look at that. Alright.
I have another thing for him.
Alright, I'm gonna move right along.
Sorry. As Chair of the Operations Committee, could I get a list of the current nuisances list and what progress they're at?
I believe we can get you that yet.
Okay.
I have a curiosity question real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
An extra large piece of evidence that's there. That, I don't know if I can see there.
Are you talking about the police department air B and B? To pay to fix it.
Well, that is a large piece of evidence from a high priority case.
Is it safe there?
Is it safe?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Cameras are on.
Cameras are on it, the wheels are chopped.
That was, that was my question. That was the reason for my question.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I actually purchased chops months ago, kept them up in the shelter.
I saw them.
Yeah, it's taped off, nobody can get in it. If somebody were to get in it, there's nothing to, like a kid, there's nothing to hurt themselves. But we are, I picked it up to the process of early tomorrow to see if it will remain here or we can take
I've been married for thirty-seven years.
Out to find the shelter or the other vehicles are.
That's it.
And if so, I'll look it up. My drop in tech app ticker.
I was just curious. Thank you.
No, it's quite all right. It's quite cumbersome being right there.
Kind of in a way.
It's inviting though too. That was my concern, to invite
How, how, how
We don't know that same person.
Right by the police station, so. You know?
That person is too far away.
Oh, no, that's not what I was saying. I do know that much of that. But there's other people that are, you know, maybe looking for places to stay and
Well, if they just go down two doors, knock real loud, someone will probably give them a place to stay.
We got Miss Phil Lance.
I know, how dare I? Okay, moving right along, Water Department.
I only have one item that I know of right now. And that if you put this in, okay, so everybody should have a quotation from HAC company. What this is for is this is for the replacement PH and dissolved oxygen meter at the wastewater facility.
It's actually in your package.
It's on the backside of that letter, the outlook.
Oh.
I think it's on the backside of that.
Yeah, got it.
We actually use a lot of HAC equipment and the handheld that these probes hook into is HAC, so we have to get, you know, HAC probes. USA Blue Book sells HAC products, but they have to get them from HAC, so I asked them to just give me a bit so at least I had two, but they never did produce one because they said they really can't compete against.
Right, yeah, I'd be hired.
Yeah. So we have, I believe, thirty-five hundred dollars budgeted for this year. With shipping, this comes in at two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ten cents.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a cap.
Alright, yeah, that within the cap X for this fiscal year. Do we need a motion to approve this expenditure? And I would entertain one. We have a motion on the floor to, this says twenty-five sixty, is that the wrong number?
You do not, they're shipping, so you have to go to the Are there all four pages of it in there? Okay, there's an additional page that says that you spent, it was thirty dollars and ten cents for shipping. So it came to two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ten cents.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the expenditure of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ten cents to HAC for these what's the proper nomenclature?
PH and dissolved oxygen probe.
For the probes. I'm making a motion. We have a motion on the floor to approve the expenditure of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ten cents to HAC for probes used in water treatment. We have a second?
Okay.
The most second on the floor to approve the expenditure of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ten cents to HAC for probes. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Right, just for your information, last board meeting, you called approved for me to purchase a certain amount of fire hydrants.
Four, yes.
Four, I got that quote and I did send it to you, didn't I? That it was, I don't remember the exact dollar amount. I don't have my phone with me. It was thirteen thousand, it was thirteen six, let's just say.
Within what we Okay.
Yes. So I just want to let you know that they haven't ordered, they have not arrived yet, but
What's the turnaround now?
Um, it shouldn't be much more than Um, it shouldn't be much more than another week.
A follow up on a real quick question, uh, if you would please, over by the private pool, there were two fire hydrants, both of them were painted. Uh, one of them.
There's an out of service.
Yeah, has that been corrected yet?
Yeah, the out of service item is on there, yes. Did you drive by there?
I thought there were two painted the same color, as, as if they were both usable.
Yes, they are, but there is an out of service disc on the one that is not.
Is that sufficient?
Yes, yeah, they, they pull up there to use it or the, if there's a fire.
Okay.
Yeah, they will pull up there and it will be, uh, it says out of service.
Good deal.
I can take you a picture of that tomorrow, sir.
Oh, no, you don't need to do that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, sir? Anything questions for George?
Unless somebody has something for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next thing we have is the, uh, Electric Department.
I have one, I have also, uh, we continue to cut trees. Um, as soon as we're done and caught up on trees, we're gonna start changing poles, uh, poles that are bad. In order to do that, I need to produce some inventory, which starting with four is a big, pretty much, and, uh, I got a few books and the lowest one came in at nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for this, uh, this process, holes, washers, nuts, lock nuts, cutouts, a whole list.
A whole package.
And if you wanna see it, uh, please pass it around. But, um, they're all basic material items on the works and there's no others. But this will get us, uh, prepared for a way to catch up on trees. We can start opening change up.
Do you have the sheet you sent here?
No.
He's passing it around.
That very last item? Is it in here? Is that still open anything? I didn't find it.
So I can find out if it's, I've got the other side of the game. Actually, my, my, the company, did it finish the guy lines or loose? There's one, they have that ground, I would do. You guys, who is this, who is the doctor's caller? The post office is here, her house is here, I guess ours.
So the post office, there's a blue box, I'm gonna measure what the house is doing. It's behind the old house, working out a patient, we need to like. And there was, and there was a truck that took out a transformer, a reality transformer last year. And I think that's a possibility.
I'll go back and look at it. I didn't see anything, but I saw some slackens. We cut them up.
Which one is, which line item is the actual pole?
No poles.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right now, so this is just.
That makes sense. Are we, are we required to get competitive bids on all this stuff?
No.
Because it's also under capex?
Well, I mean, it would just, there's various items on there. The total would definitely be approved though.
Right. One, one thing I do know is the last time we did competitive, uh, bids for, uh, equipment, um, these guys came in the lowest by considerable amount.
They were lowest though.
Typically?
Uh.
Typically?
Yeah.
I have a question. Is it common to have this many power outlets?
Yes, because it's called, it's actually not a tremendous amount, but, uh.
It's just different when you say all of us can get turned on.
Yeah, you know.
I think that's.
Yeah, it's a higher plan.
Uh, the hot and the cooler, that's a top of the transformer.
Gotcha.
So it's a transformer's tree.
I think we're getting, uh, we're getting good data.
I think we're, yeah, I first seen it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, trees and lightning and, I mean, some of this stuff can't help.
I asked them to start.
Right.
Trees are ongoing change. We'll continue to work on it for next. I assume another month and a half, we'll be in a good spot, you know, where we can just maintain the tree.
Well, well, did you, uh, did you share the, uh, the issues, some of the issues you ran into where someone had, uh, screwed insulator into a tree?
We had some basic, some maintenance issues that are where it, they've been repaired poorly and we didn't. Corrected some of those a little more liabilities. That was the last bit we got, some tree and, we called the tree insulator. It was a wire inside the tree.
They had some tree limbs, uh, Adam, I asked Adam when he was in there talking to me about this, uh, next time you guys are up in the, the tree where it's obviously been arcing into the tree and it's burning the tree, snap couple of pictures.
Okay.
Cause they, they, they run.
We started a tree before after going tree trimming, you know, because the, almost half of what goes to, uh, they're burned, they're just burning.
And that, that means it's been arcing. On the one, are you also looking at the line going out to, uh, South Lake?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
We did look at that.
I, I noticed there was some, quite a bit of burning on some of those.
Yeah, we're gonna open that line up until we need it. Uh, it's not beating, they're gonna have each one house that is right on the edge of town.
Okay.
So we're just gonna open it up and leave jumpers, which is, uh, so if we do need to turn it back on, we just take a jumper and let's take it and close it.
Okay.
And then it could be a backup. But it's been, it's been a long way for it not, for it not.
Being used, yeah.
It's not being used.
Yeah.
Everyone. I get that open up.
Cool.
Then we'll turn the trees out there, hopefully.
Yeah.
So we'll continue to maintain it, it's just.
Right. There's no sense in having it energized when it's not being used.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, you guys doing good. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah.
The air conditioner system is so skinner.
Good.
They came last Friday, compared to that, they have to come back and do the one more thing for the heat. Change your on or some, some parts of the area to have air conditioner work, I wouldn't have taken it.
Is there any way to put some sort of a, a sensor or something to work? If it gets above us or temperature or think?
I, I mean, they could put maybe a smart thermostat in there.
Right.
But it, the, the, we weren't concerned too much on that, on that, getting too hot, you know, it was, it's the winter time, it's, it does both. It's, it does heat too, so we don't want it to get cold.
Yeah.
Low moisture up and then moisture start arcing. And we were concerned about the heat too, but it's fixed now.
Okay.
And it does have a basic thermostat on it, so you have to manually go in there, turn it from hot to cold when the check, when it.
Right.
Weather changes.
Yeah.
So we could use a one, a smart thermostat. It's automatic.
Okay, cool. Anything else?
That's it.
Justin, thank you for your, for you, uh, you guys are doing a good job. Okay, Natural Ga- Gas Department? I better have, we better do that. Yeah. Okay. Just went on this quote?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we have, uh, for the board, a request from Electric Department, uh, to purchase, uh, needed supplies. So they can continue doing the work they've been doing. They have a quotation here from Arkansas Electric in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. I would entertain a motion to approve that expenditure. Make that motion. They have a motion on the floor to prove the expenditure to Arkansas Electric Cooperative in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor to prove the expenditure in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents to Arkansas Electric. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The expenditure is proved. Anything else, Justin, on electric? Anything else? Okay. Moving right along, Natural Gas Department, Terry's not here tonight. I know they ran into, uh, an issue today, I guess this morning. Uh, as a result of the ongoing construction activity, that the, apparently handled it quite well in a very timely manner. We will be probably having to address the, excuse me?
It was yesterday?
Yesterday, okay. Uh, have to address who's going to pay for the repairs. So that'll be another interesting conversation, I'm sure. Moving right along, Mr. Osborne for the street.
First name, Purple Way, the last item, so it was a pump truck. Um, I thought, I seen it was a twelve five, and that's a thirteen five. Well, I, I forgot the last hour, Tuesday Good Day disappeared. I got the signal, I think thirteen or better.
That's a much better use for that piece of equipment than what it was doing, it was collecting dust in the building.
Right. Uh, I got some quotes on some hop net overlays. Y'all should add it to your packet. That's from ESS and Patterson Astro. Um, Patterson Astro, he left off the double street. I kinda broke it down. Um, I got a priority of it, so.
It was a separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, this is a two inch overlay, um, Patterson was two points, two hundred point seven thousand six seven, but there's two streets missed, which is around six hundred thousand feet. And ESS was two forty-eight, eight nine and five fifty. For all the streets, for all of them that I've got listed.
Right.
So, you know, we can take off or whatever, of course, there will be a price, you know, the more tonnage, the cheaper you get at the time. Down here, mobilization, I was asking about that on ESS, he said, if we take off a street or two for the mobile budget, he said that would work out, cause your tonnage will go up, but you're not buying it from gas. So it makes sense. So that, that's where we're at there. I tried to pick it up the worst of the streets.
So even if Patterson added in the streets, they would be higher?
Yes. I broke it down, running foot, what, what Danny had right now. Danny Patterson and Sapp, Sapp was forty-one, forty-eight a foot, running foot, and Patterson was forty-five, fifty-three, running current. How many feet?
And is Patterson's only a two inch overlay and Sapp's four inch or Sapp's a four inch just for the?
Asphalt patch, because Oak Street, he branded it like that. So you're really gonna have to bring it up.
Okay.
So, and he broke it down pretty good, so, uh, like North Oak that had its priority, everybody knows it. Big trucks move through there, you know what's gonna happen. They go south, they're loaded, kind of north, huh?
Are we gonna be able to shut those streets off for all their young work? Shut it. Driving in the wild, it's.
Um, I don't know what the process has been historically. I mean, uh, it's distorted, you shut the streets off, they pay them and, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to answer that.
Like the same day typically.
Oh, yeah.
They roll, they roll it.
They roll, went to the get new ride and agreed to go once they're moving instead.
It just means soft and big truck just burrowed over there.
Yeah, they, they probably won't let no money on it, cause they're over too long.
Well, since we're on streets, uh, uh, Rodney was asked to do this and, and where the motivation comes from is obviously, uh, riding up and down the streets of the city of Monroe City and, and also being aware that, uh, we had zero dollars budgeted for asphalt this year. But shame on me, I didn't bring my documents with me. I do not know what we had budgeted for the Mill Street project, uh, in dollar amount. And what I planned on doing was, uh, having that information with me and approaching the board about, uh, because of the timing, uh, of Mill Street and the school year and the, uh, proximity to the whole Rotary School. Doing the Mill Street project during the school year does not seem to be, uh, necessarily a good idea. Yes, they could use the parking lot to drive the buses in now, but we looked at overall safety, uh, it may not be a wise idea. So the thought process was is to take that capex, which comes from a tax, and utilize it, uh, towards the streets. But since I'm totally unprepared to have the discussion, and that's due no fault of anyone but mine, I can't tell you how much money we had budgeted for the Mill Street project that we're not going to be spending between now and September thirtieth, which is the, uh, end of the fiscal year. Does that make any sense? Uh, so we won't be able to address this question until the next board meeting. I'll put it on the agenda. I'll put it on the agenda and, uh, see what happens. And I'll, I'll, I'll.
Thirty days.
Cause it's thirty days.
That was gonna be my next question.
What?
I mean, I, I was pushing.
I don't have Lancher's budget with me, so I can't tell you what we did.
So I didn't really get it definite, I'm not pushing.
Does it show, does it show up in the budget yet? Did you find it? Did it show up in the budget? It's a capex. I, it won't be in this.
And I tried to get a third, maybe O-MO, which is a competitor of ESS. Call it away, somebody called me back.
It was on that spreadsheet that I put together, Excel spreadsheet.
If we, if we did this in the next board meeting, would that be okay?
Yeah, I think so, two weeks. Okay. Only thing is, I told them that we need a month of the door. So they was asking me if that was gonna be involved. We're back there, Terry, we need three to four weeks. Yeah, Harry asked me the same thing. Yeah, cause we'll have to raise all the manuals and the valve boxes on, uh, on all these streets. So once I get the list from Rodney, I, I'll be able to go through, measure, but until you approve it, I can't order the stuff, so I can't tell you how much it's gonna cost. This is gonna be a few thousand dollars to buy all the risers and everything to, and Terry asked me the same thing, get rid of this street, which is not wrong. The ESS has asked me if the risers, stuff they're gonna do, I said, no, we're gonna take care of it.
And we'll have to look at the total, we'll have to understand what the total cost's gonna look like before we can actually make an decision because we're gonna have to at least stay within the budget of the amount we get for Mill Street.
Well, that's why I called you back.
I don't nece- don't necessarily know.
That's why I called you back, saying, I'm on my budget, can I cut the street? What can do, buddy?
We, you're, you're, you're not one of the, uh, enterprises that are in the combined utilities, so we can't borrow money from, uh, Peter PayPal. So it creates an issue, it creates an issue.
So you can still go ahead and give the other departments the information that they can have?
Well, yeah, we can have a toll and then we can know what we've cut back. We have a discussion and decide what we need to cut back to stay within.
And one of the fact you approved it was Long Street, I can say two thousand, three, four, seven, about ninety, ninety-five thousand over the last block. Well, it's bigger, right? So I, we could say about ninety or anything. Cause it was, it was a longer stretch.
Ninety?
Yeah, cause it was twenty-five hundred feet, you know?
That's a chunk.
Yeah, so that's my fault. I'm not trying to long shoot.
Well, I had two things, if you, if you had anything else?
Yeah.
Um, LTAP, which was the, um, grant for the road signs and whatnot, uh, make a long story short, they finally responded. And they had thirty people apply and we did not get chosen. So how much is it if we file back? Cause I don't figure that out. Yeah, um, Daskinade County got it, Macon County got it, Montague County got it, Palmira got it, and Pineville got it. So they had a whole scoring system and a huge spreadsheet and.
Is it permanent for us to know how we score on something like that?
I, I forwarded the email to you, so if you can, yeah, cause I mean, the, the print of the spreadsheet, it looks like that, so. Um, and then the second thing is, uh, Keith Hayes came by and talked to me about the flooding in front of his.
Um, and then the second thing is Keith Hayes came by and talked to me about the flooding in front of his place. About getting a bigger covert pipe at Washington and Third.
Everyone's underneath that sidewalk over the school in Innes Bay, because I talked to my scare about it.
Yeah, I'm sure you've run into that, haven't you? Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably just gonna cut that street.
Which, the school started on August twentieth though.
Yeah.
Is it feasible to get it done before school starts?
Probably not, because they had to get it done. He wants a bigger bike. He might have to go with a B bike, which is like a whole house.
Whose house? Okay, I know what it's at.
I forget what's.
Or, I mean, what about maybe doing it on a, a spring break or something?
Okay. I mean, as long as you wanna do that, it's gonna be pretty long. As I have the pipe on hand, you have to cut the road.
Right, yeah.
And cut that B side one. And put it in. I'd had to see what, how big of the pipe that would absorb, like I said.
Sign up, we need to do a little more planning.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because that might be one, you know, B bike, which is an arch bike. It's like that, you get a bigger volume and it isn't as tall.
Tall, okay. Okay.
Yeah, something you can look at. I forget what size is in there.
I don't know.
Well, at one time he had that bug done, there was a basketball in there.
Yeah, that's what he said. He says, he's kind of getting too old to, to clean it out itself, so. Well, yeah. Let's, let's see what you can come up with on that, yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thanks, Rodney.
Yes.
Okay, building inspector, do you have anything from building inspector that we need to report? What's this? We have an airport?
I've heard of it, yeah.
Oh, hi Dale. What you got?
Well, I don't know much, I made a draw, so I found, we didn't have as many as normal because there was many storms between Texas and Oskoosa, either north or south though. But we did have, uh, forty or so. We sold eleven hundred seventy five gallon of gas. So that was good. Um, airport looks good, the street department is doing a fantastic job keeping it loaded up. We got the air conditioner fixed and the cursey van, and it's out tonight and the guy that's using it just messing me while ago and says it's working. Good, so that's.
That's good.
The last time he used it, he was, his wife was complaining. He concerned because he couldn't roll the windows down.
Oh.
You're trapped in Monroe City and you can't leave.
A little, little toasty, huh?
That's John Ranges who has it out, and he would work for Montcello.
Okay.
Comes up here, has a bar over by Perrix.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I don't have any.
It looks nice out there, I, I, uh, don't, has anybody used the outfall camping area yet?
No. No, but I have been putting, uh, I put posts on Facebook in different.
Platforms?
Platforms that are aimed at that type of thing. And I've gotten quite a bit of response. Usually involves spring and fall of the year.
It's a little hot, actually.
Yeah.
If we get people knowing that we got the light here, we got a cursey car to get down there. I think it might work out.
That's good, we need to hear that.
My daughter's family takes advantage of those types of facilities all around the country, Steve Reeder and his daughter Jessie, they.
Oh, yeah.
All everywhere.
He was, he was the main indicator of that. He's a, a member of RAF recreational air traffic association and they, uh. They help with those things and they will put a sign once we get, which we got established, now he's going to look into them, put up a sign and then they will put it in their.
Their newsletter?
Yeah, their format or whatever, so people would know of them. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for supporting it.
Yes.
You're welcome, you do a good job out there. Thank you, Dale.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have on the agenda is Mosswood. I know that we did the reimbursement for the chemicals, correct?
Out in our pile, I have a.
Yeah, up to the contract.
I signed, I signed my signature.
I have a.
Uh, but, but I did note that, uh, they were, they were, they were notified of the overreach.
Yes, I did send a message to Emily regarding their budget on their chemicals and utilities too.
So what they're required to do then is to come before the board and, and ask for an amount equal to the overreach? And the board, the board has to decide yes or no?
Yeah.
All right, next on the agenda is the pool. Anything from the pool than that that you need to report? Things went pretty good.
Good things. I've pulled this here. I've heard really good things about me.
Me too. Uh, I, I think it worked out really well. There is one thing that we're going to have to do. Uh, and it's on the pool, so I can discuss it, right? The board needs to assign departmental responsibility for the pool maintenance and upkeep. The gas department has been doing that since I've been here, at least since last year. Did last season or doing it this season. But it came up again because of an issue that was called in over the weekend. And, uh. Apparently the on-call individual did not necessarily agree that it was their responsibility to, to, uh, to come in and correct the chemical problem, the pump problem, some sort of mechanical problem.
Bathroom problem.
Bath, oh, that's right, bathroom, right, a bath, a restroom problem with one of the, one of the toilets. And so they just, you know, put it out of service. So I think what's gonna have to happen in order to put this issue to bed is for this board to formally assign responsible with this room pool of keeping maintenance to a department, whoever that department's on a bay, runs gas department. So we'll put that on the agenda for next, the next meeting.
For operations.
Perhaps.
Is there, I've not, is there more than one stool that that can be used?
There is.
Okay, so like, one like is out of service right away, like, okay.
So is that what you want to do?
I'm just asking.
What do y'all want to give to, to give to them to hash out and come back to the board?
All right, are we just talking, let me ask this, are we just talking about problem children issues to the building itself during business times, not general maintenance?
Preparation before season. Uh, it'd basically be the whole thing. Uh, every year we have to go out there and we have to look and see if there's anything to be, to be prepared, maintained, painted, uh, pump testing, uh, pump maintenance, uh, equipment maintenance, chemical mix maintenance, uh, metering, and then the day-to-day maintenance that. The, the people, excuse me, the people, people, wow. The, uh, associates that, uh, that operate the pool, the lifeguards, uh, the managers, they take care of the, uh, of the water, they get the chemical, uh, do the water testing and they, and they, they handle that. Uh, they're not, they don't have the equipment nor perhaps, uh, the necessary technical knowledge to maintain really anything other than, uh, you know, cleaning type, cleaning type maintenance and then, uh, the chemicals, uh, well, to, to, to the pool, the water.
Okay.
So we need to decide when to do all the rest. You know, it, common sense would say, okay, common sense would indicate that if it's something electric, we call it electric department, right? Common sense would say if it was something to do, uh, uh, with, uh, uh, water that could be remotely assigned to water distribution, but not pool or pool maintenance, maybe that would be something that, uh, uh, people services would do. Uh, I don't know, just gonna, we're gonna have to sit down and hatch it out and figure out how they want to handle this going forward.
Let me start the operation.
All right, we'll be done on the operations committee agenda. So let me see, next thing we have on the agenda is presentation of bills and approval payments under tab twelve.
I see that Mosswood is on here again.
That's the check that, uh, yeah, that's the, uh, that's the reimbursement.
Oh, that's the one we already approved. Okay.
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's not additional.
Yeah, that was the adjusted.
Okay.
That's the adjusted amount to bring them in within the twenty five thousand dollar total allotment for chemicals fertilized. I would entertain a motion to approve the bill payable. Have motion on the floor to approve bills payable, is there any further discussion? We have second?
Second.
We have a most second on the floor to approve the bills payable. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. I have a motion carries bills approved. Next thing we have is under unfinished business is briefly received some documents on assistant participation in, uh, public meetings. I think I actually had a chance to go over this a few more times. And I come away from my own review of what I debut, thinking that perhaps it should be simplified. So at this time, I would open up, uh, the floor to discussion of and among board members relative to this proposal for a policy.
How would you want to simplify?
I, you know, I looked at it and I looked at it and I looked at it. I think one of my, one of my first concerns, uh, after redoing it for the time, um, was the speaker card. That's addressed, uh, under the rules addressing the city council. Now, both of you who've been around me for a while know that I have a, ever would seem to have a problem with the interchangeability between city council and Board of Alden. The Missouri Municipal League allows that they are generally interchangeable except for when you're doing order citizen and, uh, proclamations, uh, you have to address the board correctly as the board owns the city council. So I took some liberties there, I may have to go back and change that depending on how we want to address this. One of the requirements was for someone to fill out a speaker card, uh, prior to the meeting. And then that would have to be given, uh, to the chairperson, which in this case would be typically the mayor or if the mayor's not here, the mayor pro temp. Uh, and then in order for, during, during the allotted time, uh, on the agenda, that would be allowed for, uh, public forum for typically be somewhere in the neighborhood of possibly twenty, maybe no more than twenty minutes total. Uh, with a, uh, with a maximum time of four or five minutes, you're talking four people or, or five individuals or four groups. Of course, there's a group you want, you want them to specify a speaker for the whole group, you don't want to talk to five people at once. Go ahead, Lori. Were you getting ready to say something?
That seems like a lot of time.
Five, five minutes seems to be pretty common.
A total.
A total on the agenda. That would allow.
Here's what happens, here's what happens. I'm sure that Adrian and, uh, and Jason, you've probably been here for enough terms where there were, uh, times when you wish, that had wished that, uh, that a lot of time for, uh, an open, uh, public forum, you want to call it that, would, would be limited. Uh, these rules, this all this came from somebo- someplace else. It's something that's already in, in place, uh, at another municipality. I quoted who that was and where it came from in the emails. Uh, we did make some, did obviously make some changes to it. But their format was, was a pretty good format, I thought. When you look at it, it looks lengthy and long and difficult. Uh, but it's a policy, it's not an ordinance. Um, whatever we end, end up with, we would accept and implement by proclamation as a policy. That way we don't have to change the existing ordinance and that would allow future boards to do it or not. Uh, once you change the ordinance, it's more complex and more complicated, more cumbersome to change, but you can, we have an existing ordinance that, uh, does not allow it. Uh, unless, unless, uh, the individual is recognized by an individual board member. Uh, and, uh, and then the chair has to agree, uh, to allow that person to speak. That's how the ordinance is written. Uh, that may be subject to a little bit of, uh, definition differences, but that's typically what it means. Uh, by proclamation, you would as a board be creating, uh, an, an, uh, open forum uh, as an agenda item with a fixed time amount in total and then an individual, a time amount per speaker or per group of roughly five minutes. Um, I thought the interesting thing in, in, uh, I know y'all don't want to be here all night, we do have an executive session that I don't think will take too long. Uh, there was something about this that I thought would be, uh, good and not all people, uh, not all individuals necessarily agree. I know I've been here and raised my hand and I've spoken, uh, in the past. Uh, I was recognized, I didn't just jump up and start talking. But, uh, rules, and we, we, we get a little board made up, probably put it over there near the door someplace where people can see it. But yeah, turn, turn off the top or silence all cell phones. This one's interesting. Refrain from behavior deemed inappropriate and or destructive by the presiding officer. Guess that would be up for definition. Uh, refrain from private conversations during meetings. I know that's been a, a thing that I've observed in the past, uh, sometimes it also, uh, to the point of becoming, uh, well, creating a kind of a disturbance. Also, uh, don't address individual, uh, board members in individual conversation or make comments, uh, to individual, uh, council members. That would be for the person who was addressing the board, you address the board as a whole. Uh, also, uh, for people, uh, in the, uh, in the audience, basically, uh, I said that, to come and go is necessary, uh, from the meeting in the least disruptive manner as possible. And, uh, this is for you, Jason, uh, no, no campaign placards, banners or signs embedded in the, uh, in the city council chamber, so if you run for election, you wouldn't be able to come up there with that. And then, of course, something that we don't have also, this, uh, policy addresses, uh, open meetings, or excuse me, public meetings, we have public hearings, uh, for, uh, several things that can occur for public hearings. Uh, how, how those are, how those are, uh, structured, how they're, how they're handled, how they're managed. Uh, that's a pretty good, it's a pretty good policy overall. I have really good stuff on the speaker card. I was actually thinking about something as simple as a, as a clipboard, uh, and you just sign in and, uh. Oh, by the way, uh, one of the requirements, and here's something y'all need to think about. I thought about this for, for a few minutes ago, yeah, maybe that is right. Right now, if you want to address this board, you call up here, uh, to city hall or you show up at city hall, you tell them, hey, I want to, I want to address the board. Please put me on the agenda. And so you tell the city clerk or her representative, his or her representative, just basically, what's this about? Okay, uh, short, sweet description. Uh, so you're on the agenda, okay? You could be from California, be on the agenda by that minute, okay? You know, you could be anywhere and have basically almost any topic. Uh, now how, how long you get to talk and et cetera, et cetera, is controlled by the chairperson. Under this, in this particular policy is for system. Under this, in this particular policy is for citizen participation and you must be a citizen of the city of Monroe City. You must be a citizen, you must reside here in order to, to use this. If you don't live here, like if you're a business person, uh, wanna come in and, you know, address the board, you have some uh, service product or service you want to uh, bring to the board's attention or some, something else, but you're not a citizen, uh, then you would use the agenda method to address the board. This is just for citizens only, that kinda line. Um, not by you guys, I think, you know, if you're uh, ever part of a service, uh, if you're, you know, if you're some outside uh, entity that wants to address this board or something, wherever it might be, then you use the agenda format versus the uh, citizen's participation or open forum method of communication with the board. So I'll stop there.
I, I think that isn't the point of having a speaker card or something ahead of time so that we have time to, to research, possibly to have, be prepared to, to work on something before the meeting?
Well, here's the thing, uh, I understand what you're saying, um, this policy, the written, there is a written portion of this policy that says that no action will be taken on whatever is brought to the board. It's basically their opportunity to come up here and tell the board something. And, and, and uh, uh, you, you know, you, you guys are allowed to ask them questions specific to whatever, whatever their subject matter is, but we won't have a discussion about what we're going to do to address it, if anything, during that time, that's why the five minutes works. They come to say, hey, the streets over on lawn are horrible, y'all haven't done a darn thing to them in seven years, I'm tired of driving up and down tearing my car up. Okay, thank you very much, and they leave. And the next person gets up there and, and whatever it is, they might wanna say hi, bye, thank you, or something else, I don't know. Uh, we haven't done that.
This would be pertaining, yeah, pertaining to like, as you walk in, you're able to address. Cause I feel like we're totally lost.
Yeah.
Anyone coming in and
And, and that, that has been stated, uh.
And I've seen this sort of thing in action in other
What's your thoughts?
I think it works.
I want the public to be able to, like, have time.
I, I think, I think if you say, hey, um, you got five minutes? Uh, 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 as quietly as respectfully uh, uh, as you can, uh, you know, state your case, uh, share your thoughts, your, your ideas, opinions, uh, all, and this is really does uh, require that, that, you know, for everybody, including us, uh, you know, that you do this in a, a respectful way, that's a back and forth, uh, respect and uh, civil and uh, listen to what is said and uh, obviously when appropriate document it and we would address it uh, at a different, at a different date and time, or it would be on the agenda, or perhaps it'd be something that at a later point in time, uh, we might uh, you know, give it to an individual committee to look at or address. Uh, we could very well write then and there and say, we're gonna pass that off to committee and that would be the response. And that, that's not taking an action, that's not acting, it prevents you from acting on whatever it is that's brought up during the public forum in that meeting. And it's, and if you think about long hard, probably a good idea, uh, to not, to take, to take the information under advisement and then uh, look at it later, when is it a planned agenda item? Uh, and whatever that issue is, if it requires action, then uh, review it and act upon it. Maybe even uh, invite that individual back, uh, or something along those lines. It's a good, I think it's a good place to start, uh, I think it's kinda busy, but maybe it's workable. It's a lot, there's a lot here. What do you think, you wanna adopt it, you wanna table it, come back and visit at the next meeting? Your, your, your choice.
How do we adopt it or?
You adopt the policy and then we'll do a proclamation. It's a proclamation, I don't have the proclamation with me. You don't have it either.
I agree, it's just, like you had mentioned, maybe not a speaker card, but it's I actually think it's a really good idea.
Okay, well, here's, here's a, I apologize, I used the wrong word. Here is a resolution, right here, and it has this attached to it, and we'd have to change the date on it, the adopted date, to whatever date was adopted, but basically what it says is a resolution adopting citizen participation at Board of Alderman Meeting's policy for the city of Monroe City, Missouri. Whereas the Board of Alderman has recommended the adoption of the citizen's participation at Board of Alderman Meeting's policy. And whereas the Board, after viewing said policy, finds it to be reasonable and appropriate in all respects, then blah, 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 now therefore be resolved by the Board of Alderman, blah, 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 blah. Uh, that on this date, y'all adopted this policy, mayor signs it, she attests to it, it becomes policy. It's that simple, or that difficult, however you choose to judge it. I, I think, I think it's time to, to get the public uh, back in here, give them, give them the opportunity to, to uh, to uh, address the board and uh, make them
On the, on the part where if you have documents or papers?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, maybe add to that, provide it to the city clerk ahead of time of meeting?
I think the whole point is that, that would be, would be asked to be added to the actual agenda. That, this is, if you walk in
She's gonna give, gonna give a, whatever, if they have documents, what they're going to be doing is giving a copy to the city clerk as a record. And then uh, because I got, I think we have to make sure we don't lose track or don't lose sight of the fact that this is a, a listening format, it's not, it's not an acting format. It's like, we're gonna listen to what they say, yes, you, it, it actually says this in here, you guys are allowed to ask them questions only for the purpose of making sure you understand what they have said or presented to the board for the board's knowledge or consideration. That's the only rea, and it says that, very specific, you're only allowed to ask questions to make sure or verify that you understand whatever it is they're trying to communicate in whatever manner they're trying to communicate with, whether it's written or verbal. Makes sense?
Okay.
And then you guys get the opportunity to go, I'm not touching that 10-foot pole, or oh my gosh, we need to do something. Uh, and then we would do that in a later meeting. But we wouldn't have that discussion then.
Right.
It's gonna, it's gonna be basically a, a listening, more, more or less listening. Now, I know it's gonna devolve at some point in time to something more than that, and I will do my best to, if I'm the mayor at the time, I'll be able to do my best to uh, do what a chairperson does and that's controlled meeting. You know, the questions Mike?
Hmm.
It, it, it's, it's very different than what we normally do. When someone comes in here and they, and they're on the agenda, uh, because it's an agenda item, we get to have discussion, deliberation, we can take action. Uh, this is basically designed, I think, based on my interpretation, is to give uh, any citizen, every citizen, an opportunity to come up to and address the board. Uh, and we listen and we take notes and then we decide uh, later. Uh, after that forum is over, uh, we'll decide what we wanna do if the information is given us. And I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit of a learning curve involved uh, with this, as with any change you make uh, to policy or procedure, there will be uh, most likely a little bit of a learning curve involved for us, uh, as, 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 as well as uh, systems who may have participated in open forums before. Do you get my drift?
I think that's what I, it states professionalism, that's expected of them.
And that, they're both ways, you know, both ways.
Both ways.
We're all human, we can all, we can all, you know, I'm speaking for myself. Uh, I can at times uh, lose track of where I'm supposed to be. Uh, yeah, and you know, I don't, I don't know too many people that I know of that, under the right circumstances, uh, fails and being can control at all times. What do you wanna do with this, you wanna table it to the next meeting?
I think we should table it to the next meeting.
Okay, do it.
Give everybody a chance to reconsider again.
Do it. Alright, now, with that being said, that concludes everything on this agenda with the exception of, do we have a public hearing, we have a, we have a closed session tonight? Okay, alright, so we would need to uh, go on closed session.
I forgot one thing, there's probably a guy coming in about building the hangar.
Oh boy.
So, I, my recommendation is for him to tell the chairman to address the board and make it simple.
Does that sound right?
Is this someone that you know or?
But he requested uh, play to it at this point.
Right, but if someone that you, it's not a stranger to you.
No, it's not a stranger, I'm glad, nobody
Yeah, that's city property, uh, how does that work with planning and zoning?
I don't know.
Me neither.
Uh, I don't know, I know that the hangars are that, that are there, we, the ones, we own the building, the city owns the property, we may at least put it around, so that's all.
Okay, have him come see the board.
Alright, alright.
Thank you sir.
Yep.
Alright, what we need to do, need a motion to go into exacting session?
Need a motion to go into
We have a motion from Alderman. And to go into this session.
I agree with Zach that requested board session
Yeah.
And he is not here this evening and asks that we possibly be posted home for the next meeting.
Sure, we're not gonna have one. Probably gonna get the deal for sorrow.
We need to ask, I need to make a smart comment, now that we're off to Well, we need to
We need a motion to adjourn. Yeah, motion to adjourn. We have a motion second on the floor to adjourn, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have the motion carried, we are in adjournment.